Alrighty, I believe, I believe I'm alive and I'm live. You two haven't told me yet, but sometimes I don't get that notification right away. But welcome everybody to a special Sunday afternoon session. Sundays are extra special in that I always make sure to come back on and finish off all readings from this morning session that I didn't get to. So if you've been trying on Friday and trying on Saturday and I wasn't able to get to your free reading, we make sure you hear messages from Spirit today. So here we are and I'm excited. I've got about 26, around 26, I think I counted 26 free readings to do. I just have one of my YouTube channel member monthly members, they're free reading. They'll be first because they get priority. And if you're interested in becoming one of my YouTube channel members, there's a link down below. Not only do you get prioritization during the free readings after donations, but on Fridays and Saturdays, excuse me, on Fridays and Saturdays, when if I don't get to everyone's readings, I always make sure I complete donations and my YouTube channel members, because that's part of their membership. So if you're interested to do that, there's that link. We also get together during the week, Wednesday nights, we get together both levels. Zen Crickets 299 a month, Praying Mantis is 799 a month. And we have a session on Wednesday night and then Thursday night is a special one just for Praying Mantis. And then Friday and Saturday nights and Sunday afternoons, even have an hour or so together with Praying Mantis. In addition to that, you also get a ton of free advanced notice to the free content that I put out. And I put out a ton of that, there's a bunch available. If you go to my main page at the top, it says new for 2025. Lot of new moon, full moon, the sun going into a different sign, you know, that happens every month. Zen Bytes, which are every Friday, short little videos to help us keep our zen. We have a monthly quest, kind of podcast video, Zen Gates, which are 112233, we have those every month. So a lot of content that's out there. Plus, I have a drawing tomorrow. So sorry, I got a frog in my throat. A drawing tomorrow for a free personal reading. I posted on my Instagram and on the social page of the YouTube post on my page and on my Facebook too. So if you're interested in getting into that drawing, be sure to go check those out. I not live, so I mean, I don't have a chat here because I'm not taking any new questions. So I can't throw it out there for you. But if you check those out, you can get into that for tomorrow. Alright, I think that's enough, blah, blah, blah. I did get to all donations in the earlier session. All of the YouTube channel members free readings except for Nellia. So Nellia, yours will be up first. And I didn't get to any of the other free readings, so that's the ones I'll finish in this one. Alright, so let's get started. I'm still going to use this beautiful deck here, which is the Witch of the Forest Tarot Magic Deck. So that's what we're gonna do. Alright, so let's get started. Oh yeah, too, if you're interested in a personal reading, you know, we're having a crazy Zen's super sale this month to celebrate my birthday month. Those are prices are listed in the description box of the video down below. So they're on sale if you'd like to take advantage of the generosity of Spirit that was like, hey, let's do this. And I'm like, yeah, let's do that for my birthday. So check it out. Alright, Nellia, so you're up. So you're free reading and thank you for your donation earlier. Wanted to know, well, PP, that's funny. But capital P, capital P, will they ever be Prime Minister of Canada? He's very high in the polls. Oh, well, good for him. Well, we'll see what Spirit has to say. Of course disclaimer, I'm no political expert. This is only for entertainment purposes, tarots for fun, right? Disclaimer and video. So let's take a look here. Will they ever, ever, ever become Prime Minister? Well, will they become Prime Minister in this election, right? Alright, well, we have the sun card coming in here. So it feels like the energy that's coming in is very positive. The sun card is like one of the big victory cards. The Nine of Pentacles is also about independence and victory. And with Spirit, you know, definitely this feeling of fullness and wholeness. And it's one of the cards that also represents abundance. So with these two cards, I feel like they are very, based on current energies today. Things can always switch, right? But based on the energies today, it does feel like they might be the winner. So, you know, of course, knock on wood, hopefully, you know, based on their decisions and with their own life, they can make a decision tomorrow to go to the moon. And then that would change the trajectory they're on right now. It does appear that they will with those cards. So yay, congratulations, PP. Alright, so that's what they have for you, Nellia, so many blessings to you. Alright, and then on to the free reading. So Swarup, Bobby, you're up first. You want to have a career reading? Alright, let's take a look here. What does Spirit want you to know about your career, right? I'm gonna give you three cards here, let's see what we got. Alright, it does feel like there's been slow progression around career here with the Night of Pentacles coming in. It's the slowest moving night out of all the nights. And it's because the outside world moves a lot slower than the mental world and the emotional world and the energetic world. And it just is like, it just feels like it's been taking forever. But you also, during this time of slowness, you've been having some opportunity here with the Eight of Swords to really question your thoughts and beliefs and mindsets about what is it that you want to do for your career? Where is it you want to go and do? It's about, you see how they have a blindfold and they're bound and they're kind of trapped by all those other swords? This is about awareness and movement, mental movement mainly around, what are these supposed to be and should be's and need to be's, these long-held beliefs? Maybe someone gave you a lot of dreams growing up, like you should do this. And we took it on as children going, okay, yeah, I mean, I know my daddy. You should be an accountant, you're good with numbers and you like calculators. I was an odd kid. I was balancing my dad's business checkbook at 16 years old, you know? And seemed good and I had this path, I was going to become an accountant until I took some accountant, accounting courses in college. And though it was fun balancing things, I was like, this isn't for me. That was my dad's dream or, you know, an opinion. It really wasn't his dream for me to become an accountant, but he was like, you could do this. And I'm like, oh, that's good. But then I realized what my real dream is. And this is like what's coming in here with that Eight of Swords. The Page of Wands here also tells you that the world is full of possibilities. There's no, I'm so sorry, no wrong choice to make for a career. Because we come down here with a world of possibilities. We come down here to experience, to understand ourselves. And we will have beliefs set in fear, fear of rejection, fear of not having enough, fear of, you know, not being good enough, you know, etc. That will say, this is the dream you should have. But our heart has another dream, it wants to express itself in its own unique, special way. This unconditional love and energy in our heart with the world, right? Express yourself to the world. Our mind will bind us, blind us, keep us trapped, saying, no, 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 you need to do this. But we can free ourselves from that. We can close our eyes and open our heart and go, what is it? How do I want to express myself to the world, right? How, how do I, what makes my heart sing? What makes my heart want to dance, right? It's like follow your joy. And so that's a path you can do that Ace of Wands is like, you get to choose. You're going to follow your mind and exist, or you're going to follow your heart and feel like you're living. Whoops, living, smacking it around. So I'm sorry that I'm trying to clear my throat here. I got this frog that just keeps coming back. So I'm so sorry that I did that in the microphone. But so there is that, you know, nudge from Spirit, what do you want to do? You get to decide. And then if you focus on your joys and gratitude and your heart, you draw in that. If we focus on our fears and stuff, we draw in lower vibrational things that match that too. So if you feel like my life path has been slow, my career path feels blocked. I don't feel like I'm being, things opening to things. It's because your mind is in battle with your heart and they're tugging back and forth. And your mind's at a fear, trying to get you to go the way, the safe, comfortable thing. And your heart's like, screw that, I want to go and enjoy and live, you know? And you get to choose, there's no wrong choice. Eventually, your heart will win anyway. So if you choose a, like a path to go that your mind wants you to go, eventually you'll get bored with it and your heart will end up winning, just a matter of them wearing you down over time. So if you're like, hey, I'm going to go that way anyway, but it feels safer for me to do this now and I just can't do it, then do what you want to do, right? But just know that it's never too late. You will reroute yourself eventually to follow your heart at some point in your life, you know? So you're like, okay, it's beautiful, right? So that's what they have for you right now. Swarup, so many blessings to you. And then Mika Khan, you want to know how successful would you be if you started doing the DS business? Alright, let's see here. If you started doing that, how successful would you be? Well, you know, you got the Temperance card here, which is patience and it's alchemy. Those two cups that have the water going back and forth in it. It eventually, you could eventually have success at it. And this Page of Swords though is interesting energy because the Page of Swords is about new clarity that comes in through time, which of course you'll learn and you'll grow and you'll adapt and you'll alter. And as you learn new things about the business. And there's almost this nudge, like before you do it, you might want to work in one if you haven't already. And or do your research, talk to a lot of people, get a lot of different perspectives on how they started and how they're doing and what they're doing before you go into it. Use this time here. So sorry, it's almost done, I could feel it like just getting ready to go away. So I'm so sorry. But it is, it's like there's this giving it the time. While there's this patience and things are developing and you're heading toward it, I feel like it's important to do the research. Because I feel like with new information, you'll alter how you do it or what you're doing it around. But it's very important for you to do that. I mean, it is Sagittarius and Jupiter energy, which Jupiter is the expander and the bringer of abundance. So it can, but it's important to do all that work first. Otherwise, you'll learn the hard way. And sometimes we like doing that and it's okay if you want to do it that way. Like, no, I'm just gonna jump in, this is how I do it. I leap into it and then I, it's like learning to swim. I just jumped into the pool and I almost drowned, but I learned to swim. You know, it's like, okay, learn however you want to learn, right? And do what you want to do, right? But I like that. And it does feel, I mean Jupiter is a big expansive, the ruler of abundance and success. So it feels supported with the caveat, do your research before, okay? So that's what they have for you, Mika, so many blessings to you. Alright, and then Morning, you are up next. So Morning, you're asking for a general for the upcoming week. I did complete your reading last night. I only had two free people in last night's. And so I ended up adding them on to the evening one. When I put the comment in the description box, not description box, when I post a pinned comment on the video, I will also put your, the link to that video last night. And in the comments of that video, it'll tell you, I think you were, you're going to be either last or second to last in that video, because the free readings were the last two I did. And there was just you and I think XO, so there was just two of you. So you can get, I think you asked that question as well. So you can just get more information because hey, I don't mind getting more. And so we'll, we'll get you more information here too, to see what else they want you to know for next week. Because I would say, if we can go into a week with our eyes wide open, we'll trip a lot less. Alright, wow, two major Arcana coming in here. You got the Tower card and the Star card, which Star card is like wishing upon a star, dreams come true. The Tower card is a message of things being moved out of your life to make space for something that is more truer to your higher self and your, where you wanting to head and to clear the path for you to move forward. And I feel like this is all about the dream and what you're looking to achieve in your life. And so whatever this, you either become aware of or something, lightning bolt, you know, in the nighttime brings illumination. And so we can see, right? And I feel like you get clarity around your dream. I feel like there's some things that happen that allow you to remove things that would be barriers for you moving toward it. So just know that whatever happens next week, ultimately it is for you, not happening to you. And it's going to be able to allow you to flow more forward toward this dream come true that you have, whether that's career or relationship or whatever it may be. You do have this clearing that's happening or awareness of clearing to it. Doesn't necessarily, because it's the, the lightning before the thunder comes, right? And so I feel like you get a inkling or information or awareness that comes around that, that helps. So I like that for you. Alright, so that is what they have for you. If you don't want to, if you're watching right now and you don't want to wait for me to post the link, if you just go to my live, go to my main page and then look under the live videos, it'll be the, the live that was last night. I think it was only like 40 minutes or something. So it was a shorter video. So you should be able to find that if you want. But otherwise, I will post it here in about an hour, maybe less than an hour. Alright, so that's what they have for you, Morning. So many blessings to you. And then we have Victoria Huber Ramirez. Hello, hello. So you want to know, will you be approved for a house this year or next? Right, we'll pull two cards. We'll see the energy of this year about approval and then the energy of next year, right? They give you boom, boom. This year, this year looks like the death card, based on current energy, which means no. Obviously, right? But next year, you do have the King of Wands here. And the King of Wands is this energy of emperor, of power, of putting forward your energy and success. So I feel like it would be more next year than this year, based on current energy. But there's this little kind of wink, little for you from Spirit going, that King of Wands holds the Ace of Wands, they hold the power. And I do feel like there is this possibility that you can bring it sooner and have it this year if you focus on gratitude, right? So gratitude for the homes you have had and you have lived in. Gratitude for the things you have in your life. Gratitude that they're going to bring the perfect house and the perfect timing and the perfect way. And if, because if our energy is focusing on, oh God, I want a house so bad, I want a house so bad. I need a house, I need a house, I want a house. I fear I'll never have a house or I fear I won't get approved. If there's any of that lower vibrational energy, then we're pushing it away because my energy is about wants. I enjoy wanting to have a house but not having one. I like that feeling of wanting, I like that feeling of needing, of fearing it. And so it keeps it away from us so that we can stay in that energy. Because that's what our energy is telling it to do. But when I'm focusing on the gratitude that aligns my energy to receive, that can bring in things sooner. That's higher vibration is faster moving than lower vibration of need and want and hate and fear and blah, 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 right? Which slows things down. So you definitely have a possibility. And if you change that energy and change it to all that higher vibration and gratitude, it can happen soon, alright? So that's what they have for you, Victoria, so many blessings to you. Alright, and then we have Minnie Hill. Hello, hello, so what life-changing event is coming soon in your life? Alright, let's take a look here. What can you tell Minnie Hill about a next life-changing event? Alright. Alright, alright. Well, you got the Two of Cups, so evidently there's a little bit of a relationship. An important relationship that's going to be life-changing for you. Doesn't necessarily have to be romantic, it can be like a new best friend, re-acquainting with a family member, even connecting to your higher self, though kind of feels like love, right? But with the Seven of Wands, part of what helps this, Seven of Wands is about like being true to yourselves. It's someone standing on a hill, being the sun, not dimming their light, not asking permission to shine, not defending themselves, but allowing themselves to be seen and standing up. So there is this energy, what helps with that is, you know, if you're being a hermit, it's getting out there. Not dating, but getting out and living your passions. Getting out into groups, getting out into classes where you learn something new or gatherings, you know, not holding yourself back, but putting yourself in shining bright. Because that's when you guys see each other at some sort of gathering. So I like it for you. That's what they have for you, Minnie Hill. So I know, so many more questions, I know, but that's enough for this moment. Alright, much love to you, hang in there. Many blessings, right? And then Patricia, you are up. Your sister is storing some of your belongings in her garage. And you had a falling, capital O U T, whoa. Does she still have them? And is it best to accept that you may not get them? Let's take a look here. What is going on with that? So does she still have them? And then you get two cards for the other, the one, the cards. Does she still have them? We have the Eight of Wands, which there, this is a lot of fire, a lot of energy. But that's what the other two cards are here. But no, you got the Sun card and Justice card and Balance. So I feel like your sister, even though you guys had a falling out, I still feel like, you know, maybe she wanted to like burn it in, burn it in the, you know, the front yard. Because I do feel maybe she's a fire sign with all this fire and you mean Leo, the sun energy. But with, with Justice and the Libra, the balancing energy and the sun, I feel like she believes in karma, like I'll reap what I sow. And I wouldn't appreciate that if someone did that to me. And no matter how upset I am, you're still my sister. I still love you, may not like you right now, I love you. So we'll keep the stuff. So I feel like, like it's there and things will balance out and the sun will come out tomorrow. And, and, and you'll be able to retain your things. So I also feel that if you're, I don't know if your sister lives with someone else, if they have a husband or something. I just feel like there's, even if you've had a falling out with them, that you can, you know, if you're, have somewhere else you can store this stuff, that you can ask them and say, you know, I know we're, we're kind of at odds right now. I still love you and I would like to get those things out of your garage for you. And because I appreciate you've been storing it. But I, I know it's, you know, inconvenient and I'd like to remove those, you know, blah, blah, blah. So you can always reach out to her or to husband or boyfriend or someone else that lives with her. And to say, I would like to come get that stuff if that's okay, you know? So you can still get it, just you can take action on it if you want. Or you can wait till the balancing comes out later, but you'll still be thinking about it all the time. So it's good just to, maybe this is a good time to understand the fears that you've had, why you reacted the way you did and then understand like, okay, they were in fear, they reacted some way. And life's too short to stay so angry at each other. And, and if it's them that, you know, stiff-armed you, you know, you can approach it in some ways. In fact, let me just, if like anyone that's listening to this, there's this great, and I have to find it on Instagram, Instagram. Let me see if I can find it semi-quick here because I have them saved because they're such great quotes that, that they've said. It's loading, it's thinking, okay. Oh, you know what, I think I took pictures of them actually. Because I didn't want to have to go searching for them. Let's see here, screenshots, okay, let me just do it here. Oh yeah, it's the first one, how to start a difficult conversation? You know, is this a good time to talk about what happened? Or I'd appreciate a chance to explain myself and hear what you have to say? Can we talk? Another one, disagreements happen, it's how we resolve them that matters? Let me know when you're ready to talk. I love you, I like that one. I'd really like us to fix things, but I want to make sure you're also on the same page. Do you feel ready to talk about it? That one, I'm not too as happy about as that last one. And then it says, I know this isn't easy, but it's important that we talk about what happened. Do you have the time and energy right now to have a conversation? Some things like that, you know, we can approach it to come together, right? So, but you don't have to, that's the Spirit saying. You could if you want, there's no judgment, there's no expectations from Spirit. But they thought they'd throw that in. Alright, so that's what they have for you, my dear, many blessings to you. And then Mishah, you are up. You want like a general for love, let's take a look here. So I'm punching my cough drop. What do we have going on for love? Wow. Well, you've got three cards coming in here, two of which are relationship reading cards. So you've got the Two of Cups and you got the Ten of Pentacles. Ten of Pentacles normally has like two people with a child and a dog and the old man in a wheelchair and, which is like the ancestry and legacy and the, all the coins and palace meaning home, it's the whole shebang, right? And the Two of Cups obviously is two hearts coming together. So, but the Queen of Swords is about balancing the head and the heart. And with the two of the three cards that came out being about relationship, I just feel like there's a relationship just on the tip of your tongue. It's like when you have that feeling, that's the kind of feeling I'm getting, like it's just, it's just out of reach. It's coming, it's just there though. And that Queen of Swords is about, you know, preparing for that by getting out of the head around a lot of the rules that we have. I feel like you've been doing a lot of release of supposed to be's and should be's and need to be's and have to be's and must be's around love. Like who are they supposed to be in a relationship? What's the relationship supposed to be like? What I'm supposed to be in a relationship? And it's like expanding your view and releasing expectations where you can be more open, right? Because expectations suck the life out of a relationship. Gratitude, loving who someone is, what do I love about them? Now, well, they could be, no, 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 what do I love about them? Because that just grows and slower vibrational energy and that's what keeps things away and repels things away. You know how like when you meet someone in a brand new, you have zero. You have zero, zero expectations on them, right? And they're giving you this, right? And look how wonderful we think they are. So grateful for who they are. And then we start to date. We start the, sorry, my microphone. We got to state, we start dating exclusively. We become engaged. See how less amazing they're becoming? Because our expectations, these rules, it's taking energy just to get up to meeting the supposed to be and should be, need to be and have to be. And then we get married. Oh my God, you know, why did they change? They used to be so wonderful. Uh, well, that's why they didn't change our expectations did. And so the more we let expectations go. The more amazing we can um see how they are and how the relationship grows instead of diminishes and ends, right? So focusing on what we love about them, what we love about them and their relationship, what we love about their relationship. What I love about me and the relationship and all that grows, right? And so this balancing of the queen of swords between head and heart is chunking a lot of that stuff and allowing the heart to grow. That prepares us for this relationship that's just, just about to enter in. But there's just a couple things of changing that energy of defining ourself by relationships, the supposed to be, the should be, the need to be, all that. It's like, no, I want it to be this wonderful expression of what I love in someone and what I love about what they do in a relationship and what I love about myself um and who I am and what I bring into a relationship. Wouldn't that sound so much greater than checking off things off a list and focusing on how something what's lacking in a relationship instead of what you love about what's growing and flowing in a relationship, right? So that's what they have for you generally, uh Misha, around love. So many blessings to you. Alright. Then up next we have Maria. So Maria P. So thank you so much for your donation earlier. And your donations this weekend, always a joy. So let's take a look here. For your free reading, what does spirit want you to know about you and Walter's relationship? So what else do they want you to know here? Alright, we've got three cards. First one, yeah, a beautiful mutual attraction energy of the six of ones. Three ones on each side is that equal balance and it's victory, the wreath of victory. It's a very excuse me, abundant card, even Jupiter in the corner there. It's expansive and it's growing. Uh, and we like that. Wow. Look at this. Got the justice card and the high priestess card. I, I like that. You see two pillars. Uh, and for both of these, and I feel like it represents here, there's so, it's like you can immediately see the similarities and the resemblance. And that, that beautiful connection, but high priestess energy is very much water energy, right? And the justice card is very much air energy. You got divine feminine, divine masculine. You guys are um there's so much that can connect you guys, but you're very different too. And I like that, that, and, and it's on purpose for a purpose, right? Because in a healthy relationship, individuals don't pull someone over to their way. Um, completely, they both pull each other towards the middle. So if we're an emotional being and we meet someone who's very logical and in their head will balance and they will balance too. And we learn in, and from each other, we learn to express our mind and our communication. They learn to express their emotions and it's this wonderful kind of um like it's, let me talk about it. It just fits like a glove and it, it's a, even though it's different, like my hand is made of skin, but you put a glove over it made of, you know, cotton or whatever, which is a plant, it's still it warms and it belongs and it fits and it, it's, you know, functional. I like that. That's something that Wally would say, you know? It's functional. What a great functioning relationship. Alright, okay, Mr. Spock. You know, you're half-human. If you know Star Trek, you know, he has a Vulcan father and a earth mother. So he has all the emotions. He just learned to push those down. Anyway, but I love that for you. So hopefully that's a little extra little tidbits there for you. So many blessings to you. Alright, let me just see where we're at here. Let me make sure I'm sticking to my list here. Alright, perfect. So reaction, you are up next. So a general for uh Meenu, please. Alright. And that's M E E N U, because I have a Meenu in a moment for reading too. I don't know if it's the same one. Uh oh, if it is. Uh oh. If Me news is, tell me about reaction. Whoa, oh, oh. I'm just kidding. I, 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 I don't feel like you guys are related, but we shall see. So a general. Okay. Wow, yeah, it does appear here. Lot of thinking, a lot of thinking, 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 right? I mean, you've got we've got the queen of swords, the king of swords and the justice card. You can even see in the justice card that they have the ace of swords there. Um, all three of these hold the ace of swords, which is seeking clarity, trying to see things from a higher perspective. Trying to really see the truth of things and the capital T truth of things. And, and it is in a way like I need to figure out uh and balance out because I've I know I have a lot of fears and a lot of rules and it's supposed to be, should be, need to be, have to be, blah, blah, blah. Around relationship and life. And I feel like they're um in a big figuring things out stage that's going in their life. And with the king and the queen, both of swords here. I mean, they are divine counterparts, the divine masculine and feminine of the sword suit. So, and there's all this Libra, Libra, Libra energy that's coming in about balance. And then of course, the justice card is a lot about balance too. So there just seems to be like there's a lot of clarity that they're seeking in their life. And um relationship, because of the king and queen together there, is a big part of that. And so feels very air signy energy, which so instead of asking someone how they feel about you, it's how do you think? You know, because they're thinkers, maybe not feelers. They'll eventually activate feelings. But they start off very cerebral and in their head, right? Maybe an over thinker. Me being an Aquarius sun air sign and a Capricorn rising, even though it's an earth sign, they're big over thinkers. So luckily I have a ton of water in my chart to help balance and get me out of my head, but uh it can be clicking into the analysis paralysis at times too. So hopefully that helps just understanding kind of where they're coming from and that they're going through a lot of thinking and analysis and trying to figure things out, trying to get to the truth of things. Um, so sometimes if they're feeling distant, they're doing a lot of what's this world about? Who am I? What do I want? What do I truly want? I don't know. I've heard a lot of what I'm supposed to want, but what do I want? Blah, 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 blah. Lot of self-talk too, right? So I feel like that's kind of where we're at right now. I don't feel like there's, like there's smoke and steam coming out of theirs, but I don't feel like there's they've come to conclusions yet. Um, so they're not, um the possibilities are paused because they're sitting amongst, you know, at a crossroads that has like seven different directions they can go and they haven't decided what they want to do yet. So we're like, well, it could be any of all this, so that's about what they can tell you right now. So I hope that helps a little bit. Right? So that's what they have for you, reaction. So many blessings to you. And then Pisces, you are up. Will you ever meet Namik in person, your crush? Oh. Let's take a look here. Based on current energies, will you meet them in person? Alright, let's take a look here. Based on current energies, it, it doesn't seem like it with the three of swords. That's like a expectations equal disappointment. But we do have the two of ones too, which is about possibility. That's when we say based on current energy, this is that there can be different choices and it can alter course. So based on the current trajectory and the current energy, it um, it's a, no, um, you don't, but let's talk about the two of ones. And I, we talk a lot about energy here and, and we don't realize how powerful our energy is and how much we invest, right? Because let's say like, oh my God, I really, really, really want, 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 want to meet uh Namik. Probably mispronouncing that, my apologies, but I really, really want, want, want to meet them in person. Why did I want it? I want it. Well, our wanting energy doesn't draw stuff to us, right? Uh, we kind of grow up thinking that and are kind of taught that in a way, you know, focus on your wants and needs and what you fear and hate. And that's what we're taught as human children growing up, right? But what that does, our energy of want does the opposite because my energy is telling all the powers that be, putting in the order of I enjoy wanting. Not having wanting, right? And so when I'm focusing on wanting or needing, it actually repels the things I'm wanting and needing away from me so that I can stay in want and need. Because that's what I'm telling the universe I really love, I love. Why take the wanting away if they love that? We will allow them to continue to want. How you switch that, that's the two ones. One wand is focusing on the lower vibration, want, need, hate, fear thing. The other is focusing on gratitude. Grateful for what I do have in my life, grateful for the communication I have, grateful for the people I've met in my life. And I'm grateful to you and I trust you Creator, that if it's for my highest experience, you will bring us together in person in the right timing, in the right way. And gratitude, 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 unconditional love and joy and laughter and peace. That higher vibration is the is the energy that matches receiving and having. So we're grateful for what we have and so we'll have more. I'm grateful for what I have with them now, then oh, let's give them more of that. And um we ask, we can ask of spirit Creator once. I really would like to get, meet them in person. But I release it to you and I surrender it to you. And so they know they're, they're not forgetful. They don't need reminding every day. Hey, just so you know, I still want to meet them. No. You ask once, the rest of it's gratitude. That's higher vibration will bring things to you faster. Lower vibration slower and pushes things away, right? So hopefully that helps and you can change that and then see what unfolds, right? Alright, so that's what they have for you Pisces. So many blessings to you. Alright, and then we are to M, just the letter M. So thank you, M. And your question is when will you get a career job related offer? Alright, let's take a look here. Let's give these a shuffle, shuffle. See what we got here. What can you tell us? Okay, thank you. Boom, boom, boom. So it, it does have to be here. I feel like it's between um four to seven weeks with the four of cups and the seven of swords. Based on current energies, like we've been talking about current energies. Some of what um is impacting you is the seven of swords. The seven of swords is like becoming aware of our own thoughts and beliefs and mindsets that have stolen from us and thieved things out of our life because of deservedness. Not uh you know, feeling like um we're, we're worthy. And these can be things that are below the surface too. Not in, in our head, but you might hear that self-talk. You might hear the whispers of, well, you can't do that. No, you know what will happen if you try to go for that? You know, we can have that kind of stuff underneath the surface that goes way back to when we were younger. Belief, beliefs that are core, that were formed during that time by rejection and comments and things that people said when we were younger. There's also this energy here of mind versus heart with the swords versus the cups. The four of cups has to do with boredom and not, your heart isn't happy with the kind of career and jobs that you've been wanting, been in before and think that, think that your, your mind thinks it's supposed to go for and be in. Your heart wants to express itself. It wants to live. It doesn't want to exist. So the heart energy will, if you follow your heart and follow your joy, you could find something and get offer sooner. Based on your energy and what you're focusing on. Are we focusing on fear of not getting a job, focusing on, you know, the supposed to be and well, I've always been in customer service, so I always need to stand customer service. Let's look for a customer service job. And your heart's like, oh God, no more of that. And your heart is like, I want to go work at an amusement park. Let's go work at an amusement park. I want to join a circus, you know? Those are extremes, right? But that's just to show the difference that your heart wants something that's joyful. That brings joy, that makes you want to sing and your heart want to dance and it's like, yeah, I want to go in this direction. Um, and so there is this energy here of you could four to seven weeks end up in a job like you normally would have in a career that seems fair and reasonable and responsible and checks off all the boxes and makes all the people happy that you think that will be happy with you, make the right choice of a job. Instead of letting your heart have a say so and sit at the table with your mind too. And see where, where that goes. It could be sooner than four weeks if you follow your heart. Otherwise, it's more four to seven weeks that you would get a job offer. Alright? So that is what they have for you, M. So hopefully that makes sense. Many blessings to you. Alright, and then Amazing Grace. So Amazing Grace. I looked over the chat three times because I am turning fifty-eight in a couple weeks and I'm like, maybe I'm just missing it. But I didn't see a question. Now you asked, did we get to the free readings yet? And then further down you had a little sadsey face of like, are we ever going to get to the free readings and, and that? And I'm like, well, obviously if you're asking these questions, there should be a question there. But for the life of me, I could not find it. So my apologies if it was there. Because I went like really slow through it all and it would have been from this morning's if you well, I mean, I got to, yesterday I did all free readings, both in the evening and night. So, sorry if I missed it. So um, I thought what I would just do is because spirit knows all, they know the question on your heart and mind. So I'm going to pull a general reading and we'll see what spirit brings here for you. So hopefully hopefully it, it should answer your question. Um, at least give you guidance on it, alright? So spirit tapping into wonderful, amazing grace's heart. What's on her heart? What's on her mind? What would you like to tell her? Boom, boom. Look, three cards. Boom, boom, boom. Number one, the star card, wishing upon a star, Aquarius energy that we're in. There is energy of, you know, what, what is this dream come true? What is this? Wishing upon a star. Let's see what else we have here too. King of wands. I love this. There is no wrong choice. I like this energy that's coming. Let's see what the other one is here too. Queen of cups, yeah. So you got the queen of cups. Uh, who rolls over emotion. She's a double whammy of emotion and heart, right? And the king of wands. Which is about deciding what you want, putting a plan together and taking action around it. What is this dream? The combination of all these is like telling me to follow your heart. Where does your heart want to lead you? Where's your joy taking you? Follow that, you know? Um, we can get into uh with humanity, when we get this viewpoint of Creator of God of oh, he has a plan and you better follow the plan or he's going to be mad. And if he's mad, it don't go well for you. And it's like, whoa. A lot of fears created. Uh, and all this world about right and wrong and contrast and boo, boo, boo and punishment and, and we're like, oh God, no. Literally, oh God, no. But there's, this is the creator. This is spirit going, you know, you have a dream that's within you, within your You know, you have a dream that's within you, within your heart about how you want to uniquely express your love to the world. And there's no wrong choice. There's a million different ways you can express yourself and all are beautiful and amazing and. There is no judgment from the spirit world, even though we're taught a lot in a lot of spirituality and religions that they are. Unconditional love, no conditions, no, nothing we have to do to earn it, nothing we can do to lose it. It's eternal, unconditional love for us. There is no hell. There is no punishment from the spirit world. We put ourselves in hell here, you know? And so, and we will get a lot of stress and anxiety about, oh my God, I'm gonna make a wrong choice. But it's like, no. Instead of trying to figure out your life, whether it's job, career, relationship, whatever, but I have to figure everything out for my entire life. It's like, no. That's a lot of responsibility for a little human to be able to try to do. It's overwhelming. Follow your heart. Where's your heart leading you right now? And follow that. Let that be the guiding star, you know, like the three wise men. Let it, let's see, let it follow it as it goes through the sky. Oh, look, there it is, shining bright in the sky. And follow that, follow that. Um, there is no wrong choice and. You can make a different choice when your heart takes you a different direction in the future. No judgment, only unconditional eternal love. From, from the posse, universe, creator, all those beings of unconditional love and light on the other side. So that's what they have for you, amazing grace. Hopefully that helps guide you in what your question was today. Alright, so many blessings. Alright, so hang in everybody, we're about halfway uh, in here. So motivational vibes. So hi, so the conversation with you and Smith, is it going to be good this month? In the love area, he wants to talk about the sweet recording you sent him. Alright, let's take a look here. So is, how's the conversation gonna go based on current energy? So how's the convo? Going to go as you talk about the sweet recording. Alright. So we've got the nine of wands and we have the high priestess coming in here. High priestess and the nine of wands. You also got the eight of cups, which is walk, about walking away from emotions and relationships that don't serve you anymore. And, but I don't feel like this is them walking away from you or you walking away from them. I was hesitant to show that first before I talked about things, but they're like, no, show it all. It's fine, they're, they're not gonna freak out, so don't freak out. But the high priestess is about, she dives deep into the motions and, and looks behind the veil, connects to the higher realms. The nine of wands, the Sagittarius moon energy is about a spark of emotion. And it's about a barrier falling. Opening up so that things can move forward and move, move there. And that's kind of what I feel like. It's like relieving behind old emotions. But you're heading into the unknown together into the nine of cups, which is like a dreams come true. Um, it can lead that way, but the eight of cups, uh, with all this energy. Talks a lot about uh, release of the old to make room for a new, higher elevation, right? Um, and I like that, cause you're moving from the eight of cups to the nine of wands, you're moving up and. Again, the Sagittarius moon is a fire moon, so passions get ignited and. And it, it feels, it feels good. I mean, you got all this moon energy, you know, coming in, in the corners up over here. And so there is a lot of emotional movement that happens here and it feels progressive. Moving forward kind of energies and I like that. There's also this underlying energy with all this moon and Pisces energy, cause we're, we have a lot of Pisces. Planets this year and a, a big, especially with our north node, uh, collectively moving into Pisces. That there's a lot of self-reflection, a lot of finding our self-love and filling up with our self-love. Which helps that other. So one of the things to realize, and maybe it'll take the pressure off, is that they can't. Bring you the love you're looking for. Cause you're a vehicle and the gasoline you need is unconditional love from above. Not the water that people bring from the outside world. They try to put water in your tank, it's just gonna flood it. It doesn't work. It. Uh, needs to evaporate, evaporates, and then you need fuel to really make your heart feel like it's really full and growing. And you can't make, you can't fulfill their love, you, they can't fulfill yours. But what you can do is find your self-love and fill up from the inside out by allowing yourself. To become that chalice and let that love from above fill you up and overflow. Then the love they give you is above and beyond extra and it fills full instead of falling short and vice versa. There's also a great awareness that you can't love someone else. More than to the extent you love yourself, nor can you receive love from someone else. More than you love yourself. So if I love myself this much, no matter how much love I wanna flood out, all that's gonna get out of me is drip. Drip, drip, and no matter how much love, someone wants to flood me, all that's gonna get into me is drip, drip, drip. But as I expand this relationship, this uh, self-love, this self-worth. It also expands my ability to give and receive love to others in the outside world. So. I like this for you. I feel like the conversation goes good, uh, things are progressive, but I feel like they go so much. More smoothly when you're focusing on your own self-love and not looking to get something from them. They can't give you, it's just above and beyond extra. You find your full meal in here, they just can give you dessert, right? And so when we look at that, then we don't freak out as much of going, oh my God, they didn't give me dessert. That's okay, I'm full anyway with nutritious food. That was just gonna be a treat. Whether they give it to me or not, yeah, I want the treat, I want more dessert, hey, but. I can live without it, right? So there's a positive empowerment that comes in with that, alright? So that's what they have for you motivational vibes. Many blessings to you. And then Minu, M I N U. You are up. Have you already saw your future spouse? What is that, a guitar? Lotus flower and a star, alright. Are they a rock star? Let's take a look here. Have you already met your spouse? Let's take a look here. Alright. Hmm, well, let's take a look here. The, the first thing we have is the high priestess. And the high priestess, she's kind of known for stepping back into our high priestess temple. Out of the chaos to connect higher like that, you know, looking behind the veil and dive deeper. And you've got the page of cups. The page of cups is like the eleven of cups, which. Is about an upgrade and it, and it is about like. It would be like you've already experienced the love and it's, and it goes to a different level, or if you already experienced the. Relationship, interaction with someone and it goes to another level. So I feel like you've known him, but I, I feel like. With this five of swords, there's been this uh, evolution of thinking and mindset that comes in here. And it's, that's important because I feel like it's someone that you've known, but you haven't known them for a while. Like you met him before, but you haven't really been interacting with them and. The number five is really standing out, so it could be like you haven't seen him in five years, like-ish. And during that time you've changed and during that time they've changed. And I, it may not even have been romantic before, because you guys were different, you guys were different people. And you both were like, ugh. Not that bad. But just like, not, not, there's not an attraction to each other. Because of your different people, but now, five years later, you both have changed and you both went from. One of you being over here and one of you being over here to where you guys have. Changed your mindsets and grown through life and now you're like. Hey, how are you? And you guys start talking and, and like you bump into him and you're just like. Wow, have they changed? Have they changed? Physically, emotionally, mentally, and they, they, you, you both feel that way. And I feel like that's the spark that brings you guys together, but it's um. Okay, then, again, this five-year mark uh, feels important, cause it was growth that happened and. Maybe you were just like friends or acquaintances, or they were a friend of a friend or a brother. Or sister of someone and you're like, uh-oh, you know, you're like. Ah, your, you know, your sibling. Can't believe you, you know, uh, and, and, and because maybe. It also was because you were friends with their sibling, you're just like, I do not wanna date your sibling, you know, like. They, they, they're like, they're off the list just because of that. And, and then maybe you've had a falling out or. Drifted apart from their sibling and now it's like, fair game. I, I, I feel like that's a very small part of it, though I feel like you guys were very different. Now you've grown a lot and you're like. Well, hello, alright. So that's what I feel coming in for you, Minu, so many blessings to you. Right, and then we have Momo seven, you are up. When will you be able to come out from your comfort zone in this isolation? And we'll go outside. Alright, let's take a look here. So when are you getting out of prison? When's your parole? Just jokes, just jokes. Let's see here, Momo. What's going on here? Alright, yeah, it's. I feel it will happen here, cause you got the five of cups, which is the number of. Emotional transformation and the eight of cups, which is about flow. From thoughts and beliefs and mindsets that would have kept you blinded and bound and trapped and isolated, right? So there is work that you can do to release yourself because. Both of these represent that, you know, emotionally, we can look at transforming and changing things. Uh, we look at the emotions that are keeping the, the lower vibration emotions and thoughts are what keep you. Isolated, but you know, and you're talking about. You're not, you're not comfortable. Otherwise, you wouldn't care about getting out, right? You are, so it's not a comfort, comfort zone, it's a safety zone. I feel safe, right? And so we're feeling safe because uh, our fears are not being triggered. And so we've created this protection around us, right? We have closed our eyes and. Don't allow anyone to touch us and we've put all these barriers up and so we feel safe in our tower. And we wanna know, when can I get out of the tower? It's like, well, when we. Embodied the courage to start looking at our um, more and more, you have. There's this more to look at, cause you're so close, because you're wanting to not be isolated, so that's a great sign, right? But there's emotions that you can transform and. And look at, in a variety of ways, whatever way feels comfortable, but you can uh, discover that, you know. The emotions that felt fear-based and connected with fear. Had to do with how other people acted or didn't act, or their words or their silence that we took on as defining us and so. We think they were doing that to us, but reality, they were in fear. And their fearful actions was them trying to feel safe and trying to feel in control. And we took on those actions of meaning something about us and there can be transformation. That happens with that and as well as with the thoughts and beliefs and mindsets. The uh, construct of belief systems you created. Around those emotions, cause this is a safety. Like a safety guardian, it tries to create things to keep us safe based on how we felt, especially as a child. But we, like if a child almost fell down the stairs, we put up baby gates, right? But then as the child is nineteen, the baby gate almost killed him, cause they tripped over it and almost fell down the stairs. It's like those baby gates. The things you have in place are no longer serving you to protect you. You can protect yourself. And so there's this evolution that can happen here to allow you to move forward and that's totally up to you. It's the timing. Has to do with you. Looking at those fears, transforming those fears, releasing those fears. Which allows you to go forward. And so you can ask yourself, what am I fearing? If I go outside, what do I fear will happen to me? Well, they're gonna kill me. You know, that's fear of death. Well. What am I afraid of about death? And you can sit and journal from a place of comfort. And just write it out going, I don't have to change my thoughts, I'm just investigating my thoughts. I'm just. Kind of figuring out what's going on there, right? There's tons of different tools out there. I have a bunch. If you go to my main page, if you look at the new for twenty twenty-five, one that might help is the quest. For the wind horse, which is our thoughts. It's like a forty-five minute video. We talk a lot about. Mental uh, thoughts and beliefs and tools and how we can transform it, things we can do. And how you can get to know your spirit guide, air guardian that can help you with your, through your mental processes. And here in a couple of weeks, we're gonna have the water horse, which will be the emotion too. But there's a bunch of other videos. There that might help um, as well, whatever you feel drawn to um, in those, but. Um, that's what they have for you right now, Momo. So of course, I'm no licensed psychologist, you know, disclaimer. Um, so you know, seek, seek uh, where you would go professionally. Uh, as well to see what um, they can offer. A lot, a lot of help out there, uh, so many blessings to you. Alright. And then Aria. Hello, hello. So your free reading, do you have the support of your guardians for your dream? You'll have the chance in March, alright. So you do, I mean, we always have the support of all of our spiritual posse, our guardian angel. All of our angels, our loved ones on the other side, our ancestors, our spirit guides. Uh, and a whole different myriad of beings of unconditional love and light. They are our support team. They love us, they want us to have the best for our, our dream, right? So I feel like just without pulling cards, just know that, that yeah, they, they totally have your back, they're totally supporting you. The only person that can keep us from our dreams is us. Our these stories, this brain, our emotional choices, our energetic choices, our physical choices. We're, we're our own obstacle. We're the, we're the only obstacle we have to get by, right? Rumi has a great quote that says, I don't have to find capital L love. I merely need to discover the obstacles I have created between me and it. And so like your dream. Um, you just have to discover the obstacles you've created between you and your dream and remove those and you can move into your dream, right? As long as it's, and the difference is, is you may have a dream of your brain, of the supposed to be, the should be, the need to be. Feel safe, it feels secure, blah, 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 dream. The mind will do that, but then you also have your heart's dream. How do you uniquely? Wanna share this love in your heart with the world, your passion, right? There's a difference in that, there might be a dream of like, well, I wanna be a millionaire and I want this and I want that, cause then I'll feel safe and secure. That's not your heart, that's of fear, that's lower vibrational. Our higher vibrational dream is how do I wanna be of service to the world? How do I wanna express this love to the world? How do I wanna show the world who I am, right? So that's the dream, right? Let's take a look here though. We'll, we'll ask what advice? Do your um, guides and guardians and everyone? What advice do they have for you about um, march and stepping towards your dreams, right? Yeah, so. We do have here, we have the judgment card, which is your higher self calling you to a higher place. And the ace of swords, which is about bringing clarity from above on what this dream come true is. So I do feel that's why they were already going in that direction, going. Consider that and understand the why. Behind what you, why you want your dream, right? Are you, and, and ask yourself, am I doing that because that's what I feel I'm supposed to do? Like it would be the, well, other people would think that this is a good idea, that I would feel secure. That I would feel safe, that I would feel satisfied, blah, 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 blah. And get to the root of the why, and then it might be like, well, that seems. And get to the root of the why, and then it might be like, well, that seems more like. Out of fear than it does out of heart. And I feel like you get some great information here. Um, around what it is you want to do. And if this truly is, if you go through that process and you go, no, this dream is all about me sharing my heart. Then this is about, you will get messages and clarity from above on how to get that. And then. And then all you do is think, you know, you, you tell the universe. We don't tell them, but you ask the universe, you're like, you can ask them once, ask the creator. You know what? I really feel like this is my dream. And so I'd love that opportunity. Um, so if you could make that happen, I would greatly appreciate that. And you'd ask them once and then you have gratitude and you, you release it to them going, all right, creator, you know. I give it to you and I trust you. I don't trust anyone else. I trust you. That you will bring me the perfect situation, the perfect timing and the perfect way. So that's the surrender. We know we truly surrender it when we. We are okay with either outcome uh in March. We're like, I trust you that if this is for me, I will have it. I will have the opportunity, but if right now is not the opportune time for this and I trust you, you know best. Then I trust that you are going to alter course. And um that you'll bring it to me or whatever this better thing is for my adventure, you'll bring that for me. And I'll be so excited about it and I'll be so happy. It's like, have you ever seen that meme of a little child with a teddy bear that? It's missing an eye, arm is falling off, it's missing a leg already, it's dirty and filthy and small. And creator has their hand down, asking you to give them that, to surrender that. Thing to them and behind their back, which the child can't see. Is a bigger bear, five times as big. Clean and cute and new and wonderful that they're gonna give you. And it's about us handing over the, the old thing and going, I surrender it to you. And if they hand it back. Then you know that was your dream, but they hand you back something bigger, then you're like, wow, I love this, right? All right. So hopefully that helps Aria. That is what they have for you, my dear. So many blessings to you. All right, and then Lucky, 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 Lucky. Want to know, will a new attorney connect fully? Accept your malpractice case, uh, his name is Mike. He's been corresponding with you through email and we had one phone call interview. He's looking uh for more official memos, question mark. Okay, let's take a look here. Of course, I'm not any, um, ain't no legal expert. See the disclaimer in the video, tarot is for fun, so. You know, of course, you are already pursuing professionals, so we'll just tap in and see what spirit has to say here. So will they accept your malpractice case? Let's look at that. It's number one. And is he looking for more official memos? I think that's a question you're asking. Since there's a question mark at the end. All right, that's number two. So number one, really, he accept it? Yes, Ace of Pentacles, success. New um opportunity coming up and is he looking? Slowly, I don't feel like there's a lot of quick activity yet. I feel like um. I feel like they have enough information like this, we can get started on this. Uh, and then once I take you on as a client, then I can dig deeper. There's. I feel like there's loopholes or guardrails where they can't do that un- until they have a subpoena or. Some sort of legal mumbo jumbo verbiage, I don't know. That they, you know, then they'll move forward, right? So I feel like they will accept it and then, because you have Sagittarius Jupiter expansive energy. They'll expand the investigation, but based on what they have from you already, they feel like. Yeah, this will be something that we can move forward on and, and dig for more uh official documentation. That they'll have access to once you sign the dotted line, right? And. Right? Sign the check or the contract agreement. All right. So I like that for you, Lucky. So many blessings to you. That's what they have. And then Atashi Singh, you are up. So I am doing well, thank you. Uh, I hope you're doing well. You want to know what will happen in your physical reality regarding love and career this month? I love that, the physical reality. So let's take a look here. What does spirit want you to know? First of all, let's look at love. You get a card for love. And then a card for career. So um for love, now you do have some passion movement with the aid of wands. Lot of messages, a lot of activity around love is, is happening here. So I feel like there's a lot of interest. You know, I'm not, I, I don't see like a finalization like into a relationship or that, but I feel like you have a lot of. Going back and forth between a lot of people. Are you on a dating app? It just feels like that. There's like this message with them, this message with them, this message with them. And. There's a lot of interest, both on you and others and others and you. But I don't feel like in February it gets to like, uh, I've weeded it down and this is the one. That we both are very interested in each other, the rest of them. Thank you, not interested anymore. Or I'm, I've taken myself off the market. I'll reach back out to you. In a, at a future time, I don't know, whatever we do these days. So I kind of feel like that. Um, so I, I feel like you are interacting with a lot of people, but no. Firm. Prospect that you have zeroed in on one, okay? And then career. Yeah, you have a death and a rebirth with career here, a transformation. Um, and I like this. For you because it is, you know, it is about uh every ending is a new beginning. So I feel like you, you find a new job that you want to go to, so you end one and go to another one or you. Go to a different department. I just feel like there's a change that's happening here. Um, or if you're looking for a job or a career. And you haven't found one, I feel like this is the end of the search and there's this new beginning. It's like um, uh, it is uh a new adventure begins. So um I like it for you, but it's willingness to let go of something to go towards something. Uh, energy that is, is definitely there for you, right? So I like it. That's what they have for you. The thirteenth really stands out here, which is the day after the Leo full moon this month, because it's the day after my birthday. That's why I know it. I'm not that big of a super astrologer. I just know on my birthday, we have a Leo full moon. Shazam, which Leo is on the opposite side of Aquarius too, which, so there's this beautiful fiery full moon expanding. Uh, reaching some culmination. So that's why I feel like the thirteenth is an important day regarding career for you. This month, all right? So that's what they have for you, Atashi. So many blessings to you. All right, and then we are to Willie Davis. Hello, hello. Uh, you'd like a general reading? Absolutely. Let's see what spirit has here for you. All right, we got three cards, all right. So what do we have coming in here for you? So, wow, yeah, there is some. Well, a lot of victory kind of energy. Let's see, we're gonna start. Let's start with the Knight of Pentac- oh, it's the Knight of Wands. All right, even better. Fastest movie night out of them all. So there is this. Quick movement of things, a lot of um leap forward. Uh, I like that because you got the Six of Wands, which is a victory card in here with Jupiter, the expansive energy coming in here. Uh, I like this Eight of Pentacles, because the Eight of Pentacles is about. In the outside world, having this flow, having this. You know, the things that you've put blood and sweat and tears into this, uh, where you've put a lot of effort, energy. Is actually moving forward in your life. And there is this boom, 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 zoom, 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 zoom. And I like that. That's why I like the victory and the Knight of Wands being. You've been really patiently waiting for like the harvest to come in. Watching the wheat grow and you're like, oh my god, or the corn or whatever. And then you find like. There it is, all the stocks are ready for harvest. And I feel like it just. Boom, out of nowhere, just kind of uh flows in here. And so I feel like you maybe have started to see. Little bit of the fruit come in, a little bit of all the effort you've been putting in, whether it's a relationship or job or whatever. The growth area you've been really focusing on, you're gonna just suddenly make leaps um in it. Uh, coming up here. So very positive energies. Very, what do they usually say it? I, I know it's like in the Chinese zodiac, it, you have a very. It's like a beneficial, I can't think of the word right now, but you probably know it, you know, it's like, oh, this is a very prosperous year. It's a very prosperous energy um for you here. So I like that. So buckle up, you're patient, you're patient, um. Work is cha- is taking you from being like an apprentice to a master. It's the progression forward, uh, and I like that. So that is what they have for you, Willie. Hopefully that helps. Many blessings to you. All right, and then Eagle, you are up next. Is it over between the Taurus and you? Let's take a look here. Based on current energies. Is it over? Yeah, you know, we got the Tower card, which is. The energy of that people or situations are moved out of our life on purpose, for a purpose to make space for something. That is more in alignment. And the Page of Wands is like something more in alignment with your energy. It's. Uh, an upgrade, another level that comes here. So I do feel. Like, like it is over. This is what the cards would tell me here. But it's like an upgrade and, and it's funny. Getting the upgrade part with the Tower card, because one of the things I, I say about the Tower card is like. Yeah, it's tough when that old. Um, sorry, I'm falling off my chair. Like when that, the, the old condemned tower that. Had rats and leaking gas and the, the plumbing didn't work and the roof leaked and. The plumbing was an outdoor outhouse and, you know. But it was the only tower I had, you know. Uh, I, when it gets struck by lightning and burns down, we're like, no, not my old dilapidated condemned tower. But after it, in the rubbles moved away and the insurance man comes and goes, all right, so. You had great insurance on this. In fact, that tower was just one of four that was left over from the castle. That you had insured, that you never put in a claim for. Um, so we're gonna replace and give you four towers. With huge walls for protection and a castle inside too. And you're like, what? That's the upgrade. You're like. If you thought this Taurus was amazing. What's coming for you is gonna be, what, what, uh, 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 amazing, you know, so much more. And sometimes that helps when you realize, okay. You know, I still can mourn the loss of the last of the dilapidated towers of, of that. But I can celebrate what's coming in my way too, right? So hopefully that helps a little bit, Eagle. That's what they have coming in for you. So many blessings. Oh, right. So hang in there, everybody. Let's see, we got one, two, three, we got like six more to go. So we're almost there. Hang in there. You're like, oh my god, I'm the last one. All right, so Magana. Hey, so you want to know what do you have waiting for you in the near future? All right, so based on your current energies. Let's take a look here and see what's coming your way in the near future, right? Oh, okay. So I like first what they gave you is the magician card, which is like, wow, you know, you are the one. That is drawing things to yourself. And so they gave me two cards to tell me what's currently heading towards you, but they're like. But that doesn't mean that has to be all, you know, they're like, there's so much. Whatever your energy you're focusing on is what you draw to you. You hold the power. You are the magician, you know, even. The way they have it with their hand and not holding the wand, it's like, I am the old powerful one. But you get to draw in your energy and draw towards you what you focus on, so. Just be aware not to focus your energy on want and need and hate what I, I want out of my life. What I fear won't come into my life, or I fear won't leave my life, or what I need, 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 want, want, want. All that repels. Those things, uh, the things we want away and it draws in the things we don't want that we're fearing, right? So the attitude of gratitude, right? We talk about a lot. Finding ways to celebrate. Things that you want, like if I'm looking for love, I'm gonna focus on all the loves I've had in my life. What I've so grateful that I loved about them. That just draws in things that matches that energy, right? And even thank you, Creator. I trust that you're gonna bring me the perfect person. The perfect way. In perfect way and um in perfect timing. I don't know if I said that piece, because that's important. Your timing, perfect timing, or a situation if that's what we're looking for too. But it's all about the gratitude and like, I, I don't want a new job. Well, I can think about all the jobs I've had that I'm grateful for in the past and. Trust that you're gonna bring me the perfect job and the perfect time, the perfect way. Show me how I can prepare for it. Show me, you know. It's different energies and you control that with all that, right? As of right now. Yeah, so you do have a new opportunity that's coming in here with the Page of Pentacles. And the Five of Wands here, this really has taken on a different energy for me over this weekend. Uh, because of a specific reading, this is representing. Community and the energy around community and around friends. And so I, I do feel like right now there is this new opportunity of, if you've been looking for a group of close friends. Um, or expanding your friendship circle or, but I do feel it's specifically around. Friendships and um. Like a group, a community of coming together. So I, I like that for you and I feel like that's what's drawing in, that's what's coming, you, what's. Waiting for you in the near future is that there is a, a group and it could be like a group of five, you and four others. Because of the Five of Wands, but it is like, oh, wow, you know, I really love this. Cohesive group and it's a non-dramatic group, thank god, right? Uh, but I love that. And so that is um what you've been. Drawing, drawing towards you and it can come in even faster the more you're look at. Uh, the gratitude around the friends you've had in the past and the kind of connections you've enjoyed in the past. That can help draw it in even sooner for you too. So that's what they have for you, Magana. So many blessings to you. All right, and then up next we got Carmel Damon, twenty four. Hello, hello. So you want to know why DL is thinking of you and the current intentions towards you, all right? So let's take a look at this particular individual. Their thoughts and what is their current intention? So their thoughts here, we do have the Eight of Pentacles. Eight of Pentacles, there is this energy here. I don't know why it's bloods, because it's putting in the blood, the sweat, the tears to get the reward. And. It, it's funny because it's like, what are they thinking of me? And they're like, well. Uh, there's an old saying of, you know, yeah, I'm high maintenance, but I'm worth it. If you've ever heard that before. It always stuck with me when I heard it. You know, there's people who are high, high maintenance that aren't worth it. But I feel like they feel like you're a lot of work. Like, uh, it's gonna take me, you know, a lot to be able to get close and for you to open up and. Um, and whatever else comes with all that. Um, but there is that energy here of, of doing that and. So I think that's the, the feel, the thought of it, it looks like, but you're worth it. And, and that's good, right? Maybe. We can, we can choose to take it whatever way we want, right? But that's what's going outside their head. It's like, wow, you're not just, you're not easy. Like, oh, that's kind of a word, right? You. Because it's like um. The example that kind of spirit is showing me just through, through different other. Discussions I've had with other friends and, and other people and stuff is like, there's um. Situations where all I have to be is me and they're begging for me and begging for it or whatever. You know, I don't have to do anything, you know, and then. You know, I don't have to do anything, you know, and then there's others that, you know, it's like, wow, I have to like. They're okay, this other person's okay if I text whenever I feel like it and um, you know. That I'm, I'm sweaty and sloppy from going to the gym to go hang out on a date or whatever. And then there's other people that are like, well, you you need to. Communicate with me and you need to show me respect, like I'm respecting you and da, da, da. It's like, wow, that's, that's, to them, it feels like work. I have to work for this. I have to, but they're like, but it's worth it cuz of what they get back from you too, is what they're thinking is, right? So anyway, and then what are their intentions? You know, they do here, and this, this makes sense with this Eight of Pentacles and all this feeling like it's work. The Five of Pentacles is this fear of lack of not being enough, not being able to keep up, right? It's like. Like those situations, like it's easy if I don't have to do anything. I, I don't have to do anything. I I can't fail with this one cuz they'll just give me whatever. You know, they'll let me do whatever and they'll give me everything, you know. But this, what if I can't keep up? What if I can't reach and and do all the things? And there's that fear that's there. And I feel like their intentions right now are more. Like, uh, cuz the current intention is like, oh, I don't know what I, I don't know. Should, I don't know if I should. It's like this hesitancy that's there. It's like, oh, I know it's worth it, but do I wanna? Do I wanna, you know, pull the latch and go for it? And risk it? Or not, you know, um, and so that's kind of where they're at right now. Interesting. Alright, so that's what they have for you, Carmel. So many blessings to you. Alright, and then Lali Darby. Thank you so much. You wanna know if you could have a card, please? Yeah, well, actually, maybe they'll give you two. So we'll do a general reading, see what spirit wants you to know right now. Alright, there is one and I did see another one. So you've got two. Hmm, I love it, I love it. You got both the Six of Pentacles and the Wheel of Fortune. This does talk about abundance and fullness headed your way cuz the Six of Pentacles, you can see how they. They've got the Pentacles and they're able to have enough for themselves and they're giving to others too. And the Wheel of Fortune, the tune for you, the fortune and the fortune. It is showing about the wheels are turning and bringing you in expansiveness and abundant feelings coming in, whether that is money or. Emotion or fullness, whatever you feel like abundance is. It's, it's coming your way. The wheels are turning, it's bringing it, it bringing it towards you here. I really like this energy and that that they wanna bring this for, towards you. Um, something just to be aware of and and what I'll do, I'm going to, let me grab a, let's see, I don't know, it's over here. I'm gonna grab a um, a video. I talk about a lot the Six of Pentacles. Because in our um, current society, we kind of are taught when we're younger. To kind of have an out of balance, giving and receiving kind of of energy. Um, so what I will do, I'm going to. Once I'm done here, probably in about ten, fifteen minutes, I'm gonna post um, a comment. And pin it on the video and next to your name will be the Six of Pentacles, a little link. To a, it's a short video, it's ten minutes or less, but it talks about if you've have felt. Like you've had to overgive in your life, like I, I give so much and I get so little, then then there's this out of balance, giving and receiving. That was developed when you were seven years old or younger and that video talks about how you can balance it out. To bring down these walls, these barriers your inner child has put up going, we don't deserve that stuff yet, so. The Wheel of Fortune and this abundance is coming, but if we don't bring down the forest field, it just waits outside of there till we do. And so it's kind of like preparing, alright, I'm gonna bring down those walls before that abundance comes my way. Um, and I feel like that's an important thing to do. So um, I like this uh, energy for you and um. Let me know if you have any questions on that video too, but uh, it's a, I feel like it's a wonderful abundant time for you, the tune of for you. So I like that, right? And that's what they have for you right now, Lali Darby. So hopefully that helps. Many blessings to you. Alright, and then Infinity, you are up next. Hello. So will you be hired at the job you interviewed most recently at? Alright, let's see, based on current energies, will you, whoa, will you be hired? Okay, get that one. Will you be hired? At this job, okay. Well, you got the Page of Pentacles. Maybe that's why they gave you one card. The the others kept on, didn't feel right. Uh, you get one and it is a yes. Page of Pentacles. So that's abundance, new opportunities, enhanced opportunities. Approaching you in the outside world. So easy breezy, short and easy today. Yes, enjoy. Many blessings to you. Alright, that's what they got for you, Infinity. They didn't wanna add anything else today. Alright, and then Mrs. Eve, you are up. So hello, hello. So you'd like um, a card surrounding your light worker journey. Alright. So let's take a look here and see. And your light worker journey, what? What did they want to bring forward here for you? Alright. So I like this for you. So, you know, bottom of the deck, they showed it to me. I'm just gonna show it. It's the Six of Cups. This is past life connection, energy, access to the Akashic records. You also have the Queen of Cups. The Queen of Cups, she gets double portion water energy, which makes her very empathic and connected. To the subconscious world, right? So I love this for you. I don't know if you have an interest in past life regression or past life readings. Or connecting to the Akashic records, but this is highly, you're highly gifted in it. Uh, it's like a natural gift. So something to think about, something to look at if you haven't already. But I feel like it's very, very important for you. You, you have the Nine of Pentacles come in too, which is about. Independence and 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 you also got the Wheel of Fortune. Both of these are money, fortune. Abundance, uh, kind of energies and the the Nine of. Pentacles has spirit with you here, independent. And so I feel like with your light worker journey. One, they wanted you to recognize that you do have a great ability to dive deep into the subconscious, help. People with emotional transformation, transmutation of emotional energies, um, past life. Emotions and past life connections, uh, and that you can actually turn it into something that you can. Have sustenance come in from it too, that you can be very successful at it. Uh, and have also funds from it too. I feel like there's something maybe. It's difficult for light workers to charge for their gifts. Because we feel like it's such a a blessing and a gift to us to be able to do it. And I struggled with that in the beginning, that's why I worked so long and then I was exhausted though, after I got home from my job. That I couldn't do a whole lot for spirit with the energy that was left, you know, it was very limited and small. But when I made the leap to leave um, all of that and and follow my heart. Then I'm like, okay, you know, I see now, Spirit. Thank you for letting me see that I can charge for things. Um, and that I can have money come in to sustain it. But I can give and do so much more. That's why I love doing all the videos I do and try to stay on and do as many things. Balance is important cuz we can always overdo things. But it's about, it's okay. To be able to be paid for the services. It's an energy exchange. You're giving people hope, you're giving people relief from a lot of emotions and giving them information. It's good. You can do that, right? So that's what I feel is coming in for you, Miss, Mrs. Eve. So um, hopefully that helps and many blessings to you. Alrighty, well, lastly, but not leastly. We've got uh, Bakalpa KC. So hopefully I didn't miss anyone. If I did, my biggest apologies, oh my goodness. Um, but you wanna know, you would like a general reading about your love and finances, uh, especially. Cuz you're really struggling at the moment. Okay, send you a lot of love and light here. Let's take a look here. So a general reading here, oops, no, not those, okay. So we'll look at, um, we'll pull a card for love. And then this one, this for finance. Alright, so for love. Yeah, you've got the Page of Swords, not Page of Swords, Page of Wands coming in here. And the Page of Wands, you know, it does talk about. Uh, a new passion that will be entering your life. So you will be having it come towards you. Something to just realize around the Page of Wands is that, you know, what we focus and use our energy. Uh, we draw and grow, right? And so you'll hear me talk a lot about. How we use that energy. If I focus on like, I want love, I need love. The my energy is actu- actually saying I enjoy wanting, I enjoy needing. Not love, that is like, oh, you like wanting? Well, we'll keep things away from you then so you can want longer. And we'll keep things away from you so you can feel that need longer cuz it sounds like you really enjoy wanting and needing. Um, or fearing or hating, you know, whatever we focus on, we draw to us. So when we're doing that, we're like, oh no, that's not what I want. So if I wanna draw love to me and I wanna draw it faster, one, I turn inward and upward and I I focus on myself love, right? Cuz we can't love others more than we love ourselves, nor receive love from others more than we love ourselves. So we gotta raise our love vibration. So we can give and receive and have a healthy, loving relationship. But I also focus on gratitude. Who are the loves I've had in my life? You know, if I've had them. Then I think about all the things I loved about each one of them, what I'm grateful for, that. Energy of gratitude is what opens us up to be able to receive from others and and has us that, that beautiful flow that comes in, right? So I like that, um, coming in here. It is there, even got Planet Venus, um. Making herself present in the card, which is love. And so it's drawing this, this energy towards you. And that you have it coming towards you, but. Um, when we're focused on lower vibrational energies rooted in fear and want and need and hate and. Anything like that, it slows things down. Higher vibration, the more you raise your love vibration, the faster. Whoops, it draws things to us, right? So I like that. That can work for finances too. Let's see what else they want you to know about finances. Yeah, the Knight of Swords here. They're on a quest for seeing things from a higher perspective and gaining clarity here too, around finances. And so. I feel like, like they're, um, because they're, the way the cards came out is the Knight is riding towards the. Um, Page of Wands here, that this is the information that they wanted you to know about both love and finances, right? The, the universe isn't just bringing us stuff cuz of what they think what we want. It's, it's like when you go to a restaurant. The, usually, there's some restaurants like this, but most restaurants just, they come in and give you a menu and ask you what you want and then. You tell them and they bring it to you. That's the same way with our energy. Our energy orders the men- off the menu and brings it towards us. By focusing on gratitude, or if we're focusing on a lower vibrational, it's what we end up getting. They don't just, you walk in and the waitress comes up and, or wait, wait, wait person comes in and goes, here's your meal and you're like. I didn't order this, you know. It's you're in charge of your finances, your love, everything that you're drawing in your life. You have drawn in. And if there's things in your life that you're struggling with and that you don't um, feel is matching up to what you want. Then you can change your vibration. There's a great video, um. In fact, let me find it here. Let's see, do I have it? I think I kept it over here. Yeah, the, the Zen Gate from January first is the magician's portal. Which talks a lot about our power and our energy. Um, so I'm gonna, I'll be done here in a moment and I'm gonna post. A comment listing the order. You'll be the last on the list, but next to your name, I'm gonna put a link to that video so you can just click on it and go to it. But it will talk a lot about your empowerment and things that you can do to um, ignite that, right? And bring in something more along the lines of what you're really trying to draw to you and um, instead of what. Because of what we were taught growing up, what you're drawing to you. So I like it for you. Very empowering, alright? So that's what they have for you, Bakalpa, and many blessings to you. And thank you guys so much for all your love and all your support. All the thumbs up. It tells me you enjoy the free readings. Be sure to check out my um, social media on Facebook or Instagram or on the community tab. There's a listing for my drawing, the final drawing tomorrow. I'll be having a drawing for. A, a free personal recorded reading. This will be number five and final winner for this drawing. So it's not too late to get into that. Uh, and I have a ton of free content on my main page. At the top, it says new um, for twenty twenty-five. Um, and so there's a lot of free content if you're looking for more messages and diving deeper. I will be back on Friday again to start the weekend for more free readings. If you're interested in diving deeper with me, I also offer uh, YouTube channel memberships. Monthly memberships, two levels. I got Zen Cricket and Praying Mantis level, two ninety-nine a month and seven ninety-nine a month. In addition to getting prioritization during free readings, we also get together on Wednesday nights, both groups for a couple hours to pull readings, ask questions. Past life readings, oracle readings, et cetera. Also on Thursday nights, my praying mantis, we have a special night. Just for them for a couple hours. And then on Friday and Saturday night, and after my Sunday afternoon sessions. I also have an hour or so with my praying mantis. And you get advanced access to all the videos that come out. I usually record all the stuff that I put out. Two, three, sometimes four weeks in advance, uh, depending what's going on in my life and. Um, so you get advanced access to all that too. So a lot, a lot for that price, uh, if you're interested, there's a link down below for that. Plus, I'm having a crazy Zen super sale. All of my personal readings. Um, are on sale for the month of February, at least for the month of February, in honor of my birthday month. Uh, all that information's in the description box too with the pricing, if you're interested in getting a deep dive um, reading as well. There's a variety of different timeframes and different prices uh, as well. Alright, blah, blah, blah. There we go. I think that's everything. Um, so until I see you guys again, remember every second of every day of your life. You truly are eternally and unconditionally loved by the mother and the father of all things, our Creator. And of course, I love you too. So until I see you again, much love. You hang in there, take care of yourself. And most of all, have fun. We'll see you.